Good evening and welcome to the December 6, 2022 Gilman School District Board of Education Meeting. Would you all please silence your cell phones and stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda tonight, we have public comment. We have one public comment here in person, Sarah Kate Cantor. If you could just go up to the mic, please. Thanks.
Hi, good evening. I am here to discuss my experience with the thought exchange platform. I have participated in several thought exchanges with a growing sense of dismay. The most recent thought exchange seemed to me to be both unkind and unhelpful overall, and I was concerned about the messages that communicates to district families. I am going to read one of the posts from the thought exchange. One parent posted, quote, "Money is tight for our family and we are just above the poverty line. It was immensely helpful to be able to get free lunch for my children. Money is tight and I work two jobs and go to school and my husband does the same. There's no programs to assist when you're just above the poverty line." This particular thought exchange closed on November 23, and this post was rated at that time in the bottom half of the posts. This post got a lot of one and two ratings. I'd like the administration to think about the message that is being sent to our students and families with these ratings on this post and other similar ones. How do these low ratings make our food insecure families feel? These posts are from hardworking families asking for just a little bit of help so that their children don't go hungry. If I had posted one of those comments in a time of need and then saw all of the low votes, my family and I would be absolutely crushed. There were other posts that discussed human rights and safety for students, such as the post that said, quote, "Updating teachers and staff on gender-affirming statements and having a curriculum that assists students," unquote. This post was one of the lowest-rated posts on the thought exchange, with the majority of the votes that it received giving it a one or two. Then there is the post I made, which said, quote, "The DEI committee is doing an amazing job. More DEI work to support students is critical," unquote. Most of my ratings were one. How do these low ratings make students and families feel, especially given the other things that have been going on in the district lately? There were also concerning posts that received lots of high scores, posts that talked about things like taking away the DEI committee or taking DEI out of the curriculum. I now want to discuss how the thought exchange does not effectively gather representative advice for the district. The highest number of ratings that any of the posts received in this thought exchange was around 120 ratings. This was an alarmingly low number of ratings, especially since it's not necessarily 120 different people. For example, someone could open up 100 tabs in Google incognito and vote 100 times. Obviously not fair or equitable. The thought exchange is not an equitable way to reach all district stakeholders. Even if we were to look at the total number of posts from this thought exchange, 482, that number is too small to represent the whole district, and it's possible that a number of the posts came from only a few people who posted numerous times. Clearly, the majority of the district stakeholders didn't participate in the thought exchange, and so any conclusions that the administration draws from the thought exchange will not be representative. I am asking the district to look at other ways of reaching out to stakeholders, ways that successfully and respectfully gather a much larger and representative number of opinions and suggestions. Thank you.
Right under the timer. Thank you, Ms. Cantor. Lynda, do we have any more public comments? Okay. I think later in the agenda, we're going to be talking about the thought exchange results that have come out under Superintendent Info, so I think it makes sense to maybe talk about it there. I know we've briefly talked about thought exchange before, and it's just one instrument and the danger of using one instrument to rely on that data, like Ms. Cantor pointed out. And so I think maybe if people have questions or comments about thought exchange, we could talk about it when Dr. Wiles does her update with the results. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the 2324 budget development. And first, we have the rollover budget, and I'll turn it over to Neil. Sadly, maybe the last time.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Tonight's the kickoff for the 2023-24 budget process. We always start at this time of year with a rollover budget projection, so I'm going to walk through that, explain how we derive some of the information on the rollover budget, and kind of show you where we think we stand early on in the process. So what is a rollover budget? First of all, it assumes all staffing and programs remain constant, so we've not made any judgments about programs that may be added or may go away, or staff that may not be coming back. So we're planning on having all of our staffing and programs remain intact for next year as a first step. Also, revenue and expenses are projected using known data, so that's what we have access to, or that which can be reasonably predicted, giving you some of those as we go through the presentation. And then finally, we also use trending of historical data or information from outside entities, and New York State would be a perfect example of that, who has a lot of information that impacts their budget, and that allows us to provide a basis for determining our estimates. So we have a number of key factors related to the rollover budget. The first is our New York State Foundation Aid Funding Commitment. So as you know, schools in New York State were underfunded according to the Foundation Aid Formula or per pupil allocation for many, many years. That was finally corrected, and New York State has now made a commitment to fully fund education. We're in the second year of that, and next year will be the third. So early on, this is a big impact to our school district. It's an addition of $5.1 million for the coming school year, so it's significant investment in education. It's way behind where it should be, but we have it now and we'll make the best use of it. Also, investment earnings are another critical part of this. As you know, interest rates are high. We have money to invest, so as we invest, we make more money. So right now, we're up about, we're projecting $229,000 of additional interest earnings over what we've had before in the past, which has been pretty paltry with some of the interest rates. In terms of New York State retirement system contributions, we have both the teachers' retirement system and we have the employees' retirement system. Those are the two systems that our staff belong to. They both have contribution amounts that school districts must place into those funds. Those rates vary from year to year, and again, with the high interest rates, those funds have done better than projected, better than average, so we get the benefit of that. So there is some, if not savings, keeping us within the same realm in terms of the amount of contributions that we'll pay to those two systems. Health insurance is going to go up, and there's a good reason for that. We've had pretty good rates the last, for quite some time now, last decade or so. But what happened during the pandemic is people stopped going to the hospital, and people stopped getting those routine screening tests that they needed. So as a result, people delayed in having medical attention that they might need. And as a result now, people are now going back to the hospital. They have illnesses and diseases that weren't caught or uncovered now that are much worse than what they would have been otherwise. That is driving medical healthcare rates up, so that's, you'll see that across the board throughout the state. This is the impact. It's not unique to school districts. It's not unique to our school district. It's just what's happening in the overall environment in terms of healthcare. So we will have an increase in that of about 1.5 million, about 9.2%. And again, this is all very preliminary information that we're getting from our carriers. We don't have our actual rates, but on average, on average or in aggregate, that's the kind of increases that we're looking at. Terms of debt payments, we do have new debt payments coming on. We do have four capital projects underway where we're paying debt. So we have our 2019 capital project, which is nearing completion. We have a 2019 project at the Gilman Public Library, which the district is obligated to pay the debt for. That is pretty much complete as well. We also have bond authorization from 2021 for other additional capital project here, and that project has started. And we also had to also borrow for tax surgeries. So we have a number of claims where assessments were challenged by taxpayers within the town, mostly on the commercial side. Those can have quite an impact in our district, the amount of those potential refunds. So we also bonded for a tax surcery as well. And then finally, inflation, although it's very high right now, the projection is that it's going to drop over 2023 and 2024. So looking again, a number of financial reports have cited somewhere around the 2.9% rate for next year. So every indicator is that's going to drop and not stay at the high level that it has, so that will also have an impact on the budget. So when we look at the categories that we typically describe in our budget or illustrate in our budget, salaries, and this is a comparison between what we have budgeted in the current year versus what we're projecting early on, again, not having had an opportunity to actually see who's in those spots this year. This is taking last year's budgeted information and carrying it forward with anticipated increases. But looking at our contracts, and again, trying to be cognizant of the fact that we're in a competitive environment for human resources, and we have a number of positions that we have difficulty filling, and we, much like what's happening in the rest of the country, we want to be competitive in terms of our rates. And so we have tried very hard to stay within the middle of the suburban council. And so we have a particular group, teachers, for example. We want to try to remain competitive within that group, and our group is the suburban council. So in our contracts, we have tried to not be at the top, not be at the bottom, but be competitive in that arena. And so you can see, we do have increases in salaries, going from $46 million to $48 million. Same with support staff, another competitive, very competitive area. Again, those contracts reflect our standing of trying to be in the middle of the suburban council. Again, a half a million dollar increase we're projecting in salaries there. Benefits, number of benefits that are offered in the school district besides health insurance and the retirement system contributions. We have life insurance and other factors, social security, those sorts of things. They're embedded in that line, going from $28.2 million to $29.7 million. Equipment, nominal supplies and textbooks, contracted services, again, pretty much along the lines of what the CPI increase is looking like at this point. Debt service, you'll notice a big jump in debt service. As I mentioned, we have those four projects going on. We're adding debt, so we need to account for that. So there is a significant increase there in terms of our need to borrow and then pay off that debt. And then finally, interfund transfers is going up just about $10,000 from the previous year. On the revenue side, we have state aid. That's our biggest form of local revenue. Again, with the foundation aid increase that was finally a commitment from New York State, which they followed through on, we're anticipating that large increase in state aid for next year. Local sources, we're expecting that to go up a little bit. These are rentals and other sources of funding that we have. Appropriation of reserves and appropriation of fund balance, again, we're keeping those the same because it is a rollover budget. We've had conversations about what the appropriate level of funding that we want to include in the budget from either reserves or fund balance. That's our savings. Whether we want to continue at those same levels or not, we haven't made that decision. So again, in terms of the context of a rollover budget, we're continuing to carry them forward as is. That'll be a discussion that certainly will come up during the budget development process. And then finally, we have our property tax levy. As you can see there, it's going from $78.2 million to $79.9 million under this estimate. So in total, our budget's going up from $109.9 million to $117.8 million. Overall, on the expenditure side, it's an increase of $7.9 million or 7.2%. On the revenue side, it's $6.2 million, and revenue side is smaller than the expenditure side, so that's 19.6% because we're excluding the tax levy. That tax levy increase is $1.7 million or 2.2%. So in terms of next steps, budget process goes on for a while, so the next marker here for us is the New York State Executive Budget Proposal. That will happen in January. We will continue. We've started the budget development work, the detailed budget development work, but that will continue. It's ongoing now, and it will continue for the next several months. We also are always looking for community input, and we'll be talking about that a little bit later. Legislative advocacy, again, New York State controls the purse strings for a large portion of our revenue, so we want to continue to advocate strongly for schools and the work that they do. And then finally, we'll be working our way toward the superintendent's draft budget proposal that will be shared on March 7, 2023. And I can answer any questions if board members have them. Yes, Seema.
So obviously, this is a rollover budget, but I was just wondering, can you give an update as to the federal funds and where we are with that in terms of, like, when it sunsets or how much is left?
Sure. We've had the federal funds available to us for a while. They really aren't going to impact the budget at all because they are separate and apart from our general fund budget. What we've also been very clear about and what we've been very diligent about is making sure that whatever funding, whatever we purchase out of the federal funds is not a reoccurring cost. So although we have staffing that we have carried in the federal funds, people are aware that it's, they're being paid out of federal funds and that there's an end to that. It's not going to continue on. So we've been careful with that, with our purchases not creating something that is the start of something and paying for it with federal funds and then having to continue to provide for ongoing support of that. So I think we made a very clean line. We've met some needs that we need to meet in the short term. Again, a lot of this is about helping students recover from the pandemic, so those, you know, additional staffing and support to help children as they transition the lost years in between and some of the things that didn't happen, getting students acquainted with coming to school, giving them necessary supports and materials to help get back on track. So that's the idea of the federal funds, is to use it for that purpose. So from a budget perspective, we're really keeping the federal funds separate from the budget. We're putting our needs into the budget that we see in terms of non-federal needs, the ongoing needs of the school district, and we anticipate that the needs we've identified through the federal funds will get kids back on track, and we won't need to sustain that going forward. We have spent a good portion of the federal funds, and staffing and resources have been applied. We still have more money available. Part of that, as you know from our conversation, was a significant amount was going to our capital construction fund for the outdoor pavilions. That project's in at the New York State Education Department, has yet to be approved. We're hoping to get that approved soon, but that's earmarked for that. Otherwise, Rachel's been doing a lot of this work, so she can speak to this much better than I can. She's living it day to day, but really, I think we have a good handle on the money we've spent for the right purpose, and all of this has to meet the purposes in order to be eligible to receive the aid. We have to document that and demonstrate that, that it is to help kids get back on track again and provide appropriate res- supports, and I think we've been very diligent about making sure that is happening. So the interaction between those two should, they should be pretty much separate, but we're doing good things for kids with both our general fund budget and with our federal funds.
Yeah, I only ask because I know Sarah told me to use their federal funds to pay for lunches for the rest of the school year, and I know that's only like the one-time cost, so it doesn't fix the problem of, I know we still have to advocate for free meals, et cetera, but just curious, and we don't have to talk about it now, but maybe we can keep that idea out there. If we've used and earmarked a bunch of the federal funds already for the other work, like, how much is left? You know, is it, is there an option to pay for meals for students for the second part of the year or something like that? Again, I know this is not like a budget item that is long-term, but if it's supposed to be like a stopgap to help, and knowing that we've heard comments about the food insecurity, and I know it's not going to resolve everything, but just in the meantime...
Rachel might want to make a comment.
Yeah, I can speak to what, so we already had to earmark everything, so all of our applications for that money have been put in and approved. Right now, the remaining money, which we have until September 2024 to spend, is earmarked towards learning loss, like Neil said, so things like tutoring for students, supplemental learning products, for example, some handwriting products that we're buying for our younger children who may not have had some of the preschool experiences that other children would have had because of the pandemic. We also have money earmarked for summer and enrichment programs and after-school programs. And this third set of grants, which is what we have left, the definition of what you can spend is much narrower, so it would be much more difficult to have a general type of expense come out of that funds. And what Neil said is also true, a large portion of that funds were earmarked for the pavilion. So while that money's not yet spent, it is all earmarked. Is it set in stone? I mean, we could look at doing some amendments, but it would mean we would have to not do some of the things we've already promised. But we could discuss that in the future if we needed to.
I appreciate it because I also think it's just helpful to have that discussion, that the federal funds are separate from the budget, because people see that, oh, they got all these federal funds, why can't they do X, Y, Z? And it's a one-term, or it's a one-time cost or expense, so thank you.
I know with this year's budget, we used, our fund balance was relatively small compared to the suburban council. With the rollover budget, it's the same amount as this year, right?
Correct.
So we're depleting from an already small...
Yes. So we have the lowest percentage of fund balance of any suburban council school. So allocating that is the wrong direction. We want to try to build that up rather than use it. So in the context, again, of a rollover budget, we're assuming we're going to maintain that same draw from our reserves and fund balance, but we've had that conversation, the board has had that conversation about, is that the path we really want to choose? And if so, we can back, you know, money's available, you can reduce our reliance on fund balance and reserves to help fund the budget and try to get that back down to near zero and actually try to grow our fund balance and reserves rather than use our fund balance and reserves. So that's something to keep in mind as we go forward in the budget development process. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
I think we should give Neil a round of applause. It's his last round of applause.
You might not want to applause if I can't get this changed over, so, oh, boy. What did I do? Oh, look at that.
See the star?
There we go. So I'm not doing this presentation. Just letting you know. So Inho...
Thank you, Neil. So we'll...
Did you want to say anything first?
Okay. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the bus replacement plan presentation, so I'll turn this over to Inho.
So I wanted to tell you where we are as we are already done with, I think, the first quarter already. So this is how we have routed. One of the things that I would simply highlight would be here, where we were able to bring in four schools into our in-district runs. That, we were able to do that because of bell time and because we were actually able to get a few more drivers and few drivers who delayed their retirement. So there is a caveat. There's a number of drivers that are going to be retiring in this coming year. So we were able to save the district, I would say, significant money as we brought in four schools that we outsourced last year. This is our current condition in our fleet. We, a number of years ago, before my time, we made a decision to go to gas buses, and we did some infrastructure change and so forth. And so we are almost at the 50/50, sort of where we have 66 passengers, 40 of them are diesel, 41 are gas buses. So that's where we are. Here's the reason why we are, we have a 10-year replacement plan, and that is because as we, there are a number of issues that pop up with older buses, and the main reason would be the corrosion, since we do live in northeast and we have snow that's going to be coming fairly soon, and the road condition are such. And so to prevent that, we've, to mitigate that, we have a number of methods to be able to do that, and that is listed for us here. And here are some picture evidences to show the problem of corrosion on buses, not to mention that it just looks ugly. So advantage of having new buses, obviously, it's less expensive in maintenance and so forth, but we also get the latest technology with the new buses as well. Here is our purchase history for the last 14 years to keep, since we do have 109 buses in our fleet, we do have to maintain a certain number of purchases to be able to be on that 10-year rollover plan, and that's sort of where we have been. We've been flatlining at eight buses for the last three years, and once again, I'm suggesting that we purchase eight buses. So our proposal is two of 35-passenger, what we normally call small buses, and three 65-passenger buses and three 65-passengers with chain. And you will notice that from previous year, the prices have jumped, and you will also notice that I'm here normally later on, but I'm here a little bit early because we did secure a promised letter from a vendor saying that these prices will be fixed if we sign a letter of intent with your permission after today, before January 1, when we are anticipating that the prices of the buses will go up again. And so that is why here. So on the horizon, as many of you are well aware, there is a emission school bus mandate, target time 2035, and we are to start purchasing July 1 of 2027, although there is an extension up to two years that we can apply for. That's on the horizon, but for us to be able to get to zero emission school bus, there is significant infrastructure considerations that we have to think about, and that I will say that will be significant. Also, just to highlight that electric buses, as it stands right now, is northward of $400,000 per bus, and so we will need some help, to say the least. So that's my presentation. I believe I will be followed by, oh, is there any questions? I should take questions. Yes?
So you said that the current, like, the gas buses on average are like 10 years, right? So if this law goes into, if this law is by 2035, if they have to, it's really not that far out to think about the plan in terms of turning over the buses to emission-free buses? And I'm assuming that all the buses we have now are not emission-free?
Nope.
Okay. And like, they realistically think, like, each bus is $400,000 northward of that, and that's all across the state?
Yes, across the country.
Across the country?
Yeah. And so I, we will, we will see what the early adopters do and learn from them. That's our, you know, we are having conversation with those districts and seeing what they're learning and how they are purchasing the buses, and what the, sort of the do's and the don'ts. And obviously, we'll do the do's and we'll try to stay away from the don'ts as we learn from them. But, you know, even the advices that we're getting from our vendors is, you know, let's just see what happens, you know? We don't, with this mandate, we don't necessarily have to be at the front of the line, learning it the hard way. it the hard way. And so we'll, that's our intention, or that's my intention, to learn from early adopters.
Is that a 10-year extension? And is that just like the Northeast? Because when you say it's across the country, it just seems so crazy.
That's for New York State. Yeah, for us.
For New York State, okay. And then, I guess, I still have another question about the infrastructure piece. Like, this sounds like this would be a considerable capital project type of plan.
Yes.
To make this change.
Yes.
I mean, and it's a law, so it's not really an option. So I don't know when business practices meets, but I feel like you should start thinking about this.
Cliff is eager to do another capital project.
That's what I thought.
He is. He is ready to bite onto this.
Okay. You and Neil.
No other question? Cliff?
I only came because Marie said there'd be cake for Neil's last meeting. So.
I did.
How do you flip the page on this thing? What? What arrow key? I haven't been here in a long time. I apologize.
I'm happy to.
Thank you, Dr. Wiles. And to Seema's point, we, we did have a discussion with the Business Practice Committee last week, and we probably will, at some point next year, start talking with consultants and looking at the infrastructure as far as the electric buses goes, because it is sizable to, for the, the electric piece, for the chargers, different types of chargers, stuff like that. But on the facility side, I actually proposed this last year to the Business Practice Committee, and we were unable to get pricing under state contract for the truck, so I withdrew it. Side note, the truck we ordered in 2020 that we reordered in 2021 still has not arrived yet. So I'm hoping 2023 we'll get our courier vehicle that's been ordered twice. So we are looking to retire our 21-year-old salt truck with 125,000 miles on it and then shift to, or one of our 2008 pickup trucks with 96,000 miles on it will go into semi-retirement as the salt truck. We've done this model before. As you can see, truck 21 years old, we push these trucks about as far as we can push the trucks, but it just becomes not financially sound to keep maintaining them. Estimated cost is $80,000. I did actually receive the state contract cut sheets yesterday for the truck, and that's something I will review with Justin LaBumbard, our fleet maintenance supervisor, because we kind of, we build the truck, the motor, the alternators, everything, set up the plow. Will probably be in the mid 70 range, it looks like, so it will be a little lower than the 80. But same with the buses, pre-COVID, this was probably a $55,000 truck. It's about, it's going to be probably like a $20,000 increase for the same vehicle. And that's it, and no cake. Any questions? Thank you.
So the, the next topic, before I get to it, is about the board direction regarding the budget, but I, I want to take a minute here to embarrass Mr. Sanders yet again. Yes, this was his last presentation on our rollover budget, and he also has provided for the last 18 years just wonderful guidance and support to the presentation that followed his from our transportation department and our facilities and maintenance department. And I can't underscore enough how much this community in this district has benefited from the steady hands on the wheel of Mr. Neil Sanders in helping us navigate some very difficult financial times, political times, economic times, pandemic times. It's been a roller coaster, and I think we should all be immensely thankful that we've had a partner in this work who is 100% unflappable. I don't think I've ever seen Neil rattled, ever. And we've had plenty of opportunities. He may have hidden under his desk while he was, but he hid it from me very well. But I think anyone who has worked with Neil or has observed him working knows that he is the consummate professional, a gentleman, a kind person, who understands the mission of what we do in this school district. And that is a, a rare individual who sits in the chair that he sits in. A lot of folks who do that work just, you know, want to balance the budget and count the beans, but it's so, so, so much more than that. So Neil, I am personally in denial of your departure. I think I'm going to wake up and go, what happened there? But on my own behalf, but I hope on behalf of everyone, I, I want to say thank you for your commitment to the Gilderlin Central School District and to this entire community. You have made this district a better place, and you will be missed.
Thank you for those kind words. I just want to say again, what a great experience it's been. So humbled to be here, so happy to be here and work with various boards, various administrations, current administration, Linda, who's been by my side for the whole time, Cliff, who's been here for a long time, people that are committed to this district as well and do an outstanding job, and your commitment to helping for the education of all of our children and supporting our families. It's been a pleasure to work here. I'm going to miss it greatly and appreciate all of you and what you've done for me. And I'll be watching at home for next time.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you so much, Neil. Thank you, Dr. Wiles.
I just wanted to say one thing, Neil. I've had the opportunity over these many years to go to conventions and, and when I, as a board member, I've been going to the NISBA convention, and there they have this huge, huge exposition of all these vendors. And you walk around and someone, they talk to you and stuff like that, but I have to tell you, when my tag, when they see Gilderlin and they say Neil Sanders, I can't tell you how many times across this state that they say, you are so lucky. And I say, you know it.
And we know it.
Yeah. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. I also agree with Dr. Wiles, all of the comments that she made, and I just wanted to say that I feel like it's easy, as probably the numbers person, to see people just crunch numbers and see everybody's widgets, but I do see that you are truly in this for the kids and you always talk about the, the school community. And there's no way I'd be on audit with someone who made me feel stupid to be on audit. So I'm super thankful and appreciative that you truly allow us to ask all questions and don't us, and don't make us feel foolish for doing that. Okay. There's no secret cake, right?
There is no secret cake. I thought Cliff was going to bake, and apparently he changed his mind. No secret cake, but it is just a reminder to the Board of Education that it is now the board's opportunity to start formulating some ideas around priorities for the 2023, 2024 school budget. We are, we are, have completed stage one of the budget development process. That's the portion of our process where we meet with all of our administrators to say, how did the decisions that we landed on last April, which feels like a lifetime ago, how are they playing out now that we are back in school for several weeks? We're just about to start stage two, which is when our team explains to us what their needs are for the upcoming school year. So we'll have lots more information for the board around that. We have a expanded leadership council meeting next week, and I've asked our, our team to come with one or two priorities so that you can get a sneak peek at the things that are on their minds, but then much more detail to follow as we go along. So from the board's perspective, last Thursday, we put out a thought exchange just for the board, and I was in there, and a number of you have been in there adding your thoughts. There are a couple survey questions that, before you start with the thoughts, one is about challenging the tax levy limit, and the other is about the use of fund balance. And then there are just a number of thoughts that you can take a look at and rate. It will be open until midnight on Friday. So I encourage everyone to go in, go in multiple times, and we appreciate the time you take to do that.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Wiles. Just to clarify, so the, the list that we normally get from administrators would be in the next meeting?
So you'll get a, a general list after our meeting?
Okay.
And then you'll get a much more detailed one once we get through stage two.
Okay. I was reading some thoughts in there, so if other people want to go in and do some more thoughts by the end of the week, that would be great. I know that there's been more since the last time I looked, so. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent items. This includes the minutes of the November 15th meeting, CPSC and CSC recommendations, personnel actions, personnel action and financials, A through C. Can I have a motion to approve the consent items? Katie, Second Gloria, any questions or comments on favor? Passes nine zero. Next on the agenda, information, curriculum and destruction, I'll turn this over to Rachel.
Tonight, I am pleased to honor some of our middle school and high school musicians. The Gilderlin High School Music Department, excuse me, the Gilderlin Music Department is proud to announce that eight students have been recognized by the New York State Band Directors Association. Each year, from hundreds of applicants, honor band members are chosen based on their NISMA score from the previous spring. Each ensemble rehearses and performs during the New York State Band Directors Association's annual symposium held in Syracuse in the first weekend in March. Selected to perform in the high school honor band are Carson Rittner, clarinet, and Zexy Wang, clarinet. Performing with the middle school honor band are Adam Heralcheck, euphonium, Anthony Padula, French horn, Caleb Pinder, flute, and Aaron Vitelli, trumpet. Timothy Kelly, mallets, and Austin Lee, oboe, were recognized as alternates. Selection to this prestigious ensemble demonstrates exceptional musicianship and is an outstanding accomplishment. Congratulations to these fine young players and to their teachers, Ms. Kathleen Ellinger, Mr. John Petuso, Mr. Jason Utter, and Ms. Alexis St. Clair.
Thank you, Rachel. Next, we'll move on to superintendent information. Dr. Wiles?
Good evening, everyone. I want to take just a couple of minutes to really hit the highlights of a summary of our thought exchange that was released before the Thanksgiving holiday. Earlier today, our communications office posted a story about the exchange on our website, so I'm just going to literally show you how to get to it from here. And the story summarizes the timing and the number of participants, and you can see the hyperlink for the summary report. So we did have quite a bit of participation. We had 2,754 participants, 1,835 thoughts, and 182,882 ratings. And that 182,000 number was actually surprising to the folks over at Thought Exchange because I, I had a couple conversations with our support over there because, as Mrs. Kanter pointed out, this was an unusual exchange in many ways, and I had some concerns about it. One of the things that our, our support person over there said was that it was the highest number of average, each thought was rated more often on average than any exchange she had ever seen before. So people were engaged for good or for maybe not so great, but people were certainly engaged with it. So when you click on this, it takes you to the summary report, and, and I, I won't go through, you know, 1,835 thoughts, but people who want to take some time to look at this can go ahead and do that. So this exchange was set up so it was able to be accessed by three separate groups of individuals. There was a student pathway, there was a faculty and staff pathway, and then there was a parent, guardian, or community, community member pathway. And so you can see the breakdown of participants. And then you can take a look at the themes. I'll just click on this. And the way this is set up, one way to look at this is the combination of all of the groups. And when you do that, you can see kind of the priority themes. And themes is a good way to think about this rather than individual thoughts. So when you look at the combined groups of individuals, what were the themes that really resonated for them? I'm going to go group by group, though. It's a little bit easier to digest. And I'm going to start with parents and community members. So when, when I look at this to figure out what are the things that people care about when we're working on the budget, honestly, it's the themes along the bottom that, that drive the thinking. And so from our community members and from our parents, it's not surprising that the most highly rated theme that came across in all of this was around class size. And if you dive into those, you'll see that a lot of them have to do with the middle school, because you'll remember last year, we spent a lot of time talking about how to take care of the very high class sizes at the middle school. So that has come back again. Learning resources and technology, also high on the list, lots of comments about Wi-Fi and, you know, supporting the technological needs for our students. Safety was huge. That is not a surprise, given kind of the last six weeks or so within our school district. People have a lot of things to say about, about safety. Breakfast and lunch were high on the priorities as well. People do miss that free lunch option, and so we are, within my own role, but also with my colleagues, we are advocating heavily at the state and federal level to get that reinstated because those free lunches made a huge, huge, and breakfasts made a huge difference to our families. So you can look down the line of the, of the topics that were important to everyone who fell within the parent and guardian group. And then for faculty and staff, lots of similarities. Again, right at the top of the line was class size, lots about employee benefits. This has a lot to do with pay scales and working conditions, kinds of things, but also in that third spot is more about safety. And again, not surprising because of when we launched this exchange, it was right after we had been through some pretty significant times. Mental health continues to be a hot, a topic of high priority, student support, and you can see all the way down the line. And then just last, I will click on the student one. And their top topic was learning resources and technology, but really, it's about Wi-Fi, which is repaired, but not quite smooth because of a glitch, and I, I need a Dave Austin, a Dave Howell to give me the ins and outs of all of that, but we have a, we have a solution for it, so we should be able to get our kids on Wi-Fi easily. And students get frustrated when sites are blocked. And some of that is just a function of the fact that we're a school and we have to block sites. Some of that's a function of Ed Law 2D and having vendors giving us assurances that they're going to protect our students' personally identifiable information, which is not really popular with our young people. So they told us about that. Breakfast and lunch, also a high topic for similar reasons. What I thought was really interesting, though, on our student response, inclusive holidays and time off was right up there at the top of the line. It was toward the end for our, our parents and our faculty and staff. So you can see transportation is there, start times, coming to school in the dark is not all that popular, as we would suspect. And of course, safety is there as well, and you can see as they go down the road, the other issues that are of concern to them. So. So I'm going to kind of leave it at that and just take your questions and comments, but you should know that it's easy to get to, and you can dive as deeply as you want to, for as long as you want to, and get a sense of what was on the minds of our community while we were doing this exchange. So I'll take any questions. Go ahead, Rebecca.
I guess I'm struck by the fact that there's not a lot of, like, there's no slope, really, to these curves, you know? So certainly, some themes are ranked higher than others, but there isn't a huge discrepancy that I can see.
Well, one of the reasons, there's a couple ways to look at this, and I'm glad you asked that question. One way is to look at where, the way it's set now, is the relative importance that themes got based on the rating. So this other one, this little number sign, is the themes based on numbers of comments. Let me go to a different one here. Student one is, let me go to this one. So you see more of a slope when it's just pure numbers of comments. But the star basically tells you, even though there may have been fewer numbers of comments on some of those areas, they got lots of fives. So you can click between the two. I tend to like the one that people starred more, because that positively validates the resonance of those thoughts. But you can look at it both ways. But that's a great question, for people who want to look at both methods. Go ahead, Nate.
The order of magnitude of how, I mean, 182,000, great. What's the order of magnitude of that being high? In the sense, is it five times more than you've ever seen, and that's why we, maybe we should be a little concerned about this?
Well, actually, it was a positive for her. You know, I will, when we were four or five days into the exchange, and, you know, there were lots and lots of activity, I reached out to the young woman over at Thought Exchange that helps us, and a few days into that, and she was looking at the exchange, she was helping me moderate some of the comments that came through, because we do moderate the comments. And she pulled up the stats, and she said that the rating of 100 means, I'll try to, I didn't say it very well last time, but 100 ratings was the average for every single thought. Typical, around 30%, 30 or 40. So it was maybe not five times better, but it was, her assessment of it was, it was a lot of engagement. And I think a lot of that engagement came from the student side of the exchange. And, you know, I'll be 100% transparent, we probably will do thought exchanges a little bit differently going forward, when we're involving the students as well. For example, I probably won't do one exchange with three pathways. I think in future exchanges, we would do the students separately, and we would probably separate middle and high school, and we would have them log in. Typically, we don't ask people to log in, because the feeling of anonymity is supposed to encourage participation in saying what's on your mind without fear of being connected. But in this particular exchange, I feel like there was a little bit of disregard for kindness. I mean, just to be blunt. There were over 800 comments that were artificially intelligence-wise flagged and sent to me to be reviewed. Eight hundred, which is a lot. Almost entirely.
Why does it like?
Well, if you, when you start the exchange, it says, please be sure to be kind, respectful, don't use anybody's name, and there's a couple other things. And so the algorithm behind this can flag those automatically, and participants can also flag them. So over the course of the nine days this was open, you know, 800 comments, which was a lot, the most I've ever seen.
What was most of it flagged for?
Some of it was silliness, like, this doesn't make sense. But there were comments that used people's names, there were comments that were rude and hurtful, that underscored how important it is for us to be doing diversity, equity, and inclusive work here in the district. So if those were filtered off, they did not get into the exchange. The artificial intelligence, though, is not perfect, so it doesn't catch everything, so. Go ahead, Seema.
I know that, I don't remember when Thought Exchange kind of took over for, like, the other community meetings we would have for the budget. And I know it's only, you know, one instrument, but kind of to Ms. Cantor's point about relying so heavily on it, I almost feel like it becomes like this platform for people to just anonymously write whatever they want, and you can open up many browsers and keep, you know, posting the same thing. And I know that we would do it differently for students, but, you know, it's almost kind of like an anonymous chat board online, which is really dangerous, I feel, and we're relying on this. And I think it's, I think it's good to get the feedback, but I just worry that, you know, we don't always have a good, like, pulse of what the community's feeling, and so we rely on this. I think it would be helpful to have, like, a couple of, maybe two or three different ways to reach out to the community, and that, that's how you triangulate data, like, you know, not relying on just this one instrument. And I don't know if it was communications, or I know that Thought Exchange is used within the district too, but I do think it would be worthwhile, and I know Ms. Cantor's comments or critiques about Thought Exchange are, like, we've heard this in the past couple of years, and maybe it was just more stark this year, with some of the comments being, you know, racist, misogynistic, et cetera. I, people might see that and then just feel, you know, it becomes like a platform to just write extreme comments, and then other people can just go and continue to rank those really high. And, you know, like, like Ms. Cantor said, other people go on there, and what does that tell you? How does that make you feel? Which, I don't think that is the purpose of Thought Exchange. So I don't know, I'm concerned about just using one venue or one instrument to rely on.
We're very early in the process. So, and it's not like, well, here's what Thought Exchange said, so we have to do this. This is a guide, you know?
Definitely, but I mean, we open up the board meetings, you know, for public comment, and generally, a lot of people don't show up. Unless there's like, you know, one item. And sometimes the thoughts are, the comments in Thought Exchange are not even budget-related.
Most of these are not.
Yeah, so there's a lot of things that are nice to know, but it doesn't really guide us in the work for the budget. So, I don't know, it's just something to think about, I think, to how we could get a better pulse of what the community's feeling about the budget.
Right.
Is there any way, I mean, how other districts do this? I mean, do we, can we, is there anything that we can steal? In the sense of, you know, does something work well for another district in the area that we might want to just copy? And besides, I mean, I agree with, I agree completely with Seema. Using, I mean, we need more than one tool, and I know it's early in the process, but it's, you know, this is the time to have this discussion about what other tools can we use.
To be honest with you, a lot of our neighbors really aren't doing a lot of community outreach. When we went through the first recession back in 2010, 11, we had a lot of people in this room who were wanting to talk about our priorities, because we were making very difficult decisions. But over time, people stopped coming. So we've tried a variety of different things, so, I mean, I don't think this is the answer. I think it's one way to get the pulse. And I think, I would like to have ongoing conversations with our friends over at Thought Exchange to say, okay, how do we get data that's, I'll just say, better data? But I do think this is an early look. We've got four months ahead of us. Go ahead, Rebecca.
You know, because to Ms. Cantor's point, the comment about food insecurity, I read the same one. People might have marked it as one star, not to degrade the person who wrote it, but because it wasn't maybe a budget priority to that person. So I think defining more what one star is, three stars is, might be helpful.
In the intro, but I think people skip that, because at five means you strongly agree, and one means you strongly disagree. Blanca?
I want to confirm that, like, no student names are published on our, like, that they've been filtered out, for sure. No?
Yes, I mean, the names are easy to filter out, unless they do something with spacing or whatever, but I had our friends over there take a look to make sure this data was clean. I needed, I honestly needed help to moderate it. It was all I did for a couple days. So I think it gives us some insight. I don't think it's the whole story by any stretch, and, you know, and there's some lessons learned from this experience, for sure. Go ahead, Gloria.
Oh, Kim, we're doing community conversations. We tried that many years, and it just, we couldn't get people to come out. It's tough at night, especially if you've got kids at home, and it was just, like, we weren't getting the input we wanted, so we were looking for some way of tapping in. So this was one direction. But I do agree, there's got to be other ways, you know, I was thinking of something, I can't remember who said it, but maybe looking at, we use BOSI's a lot for this, but some sort of focus groups, you know, of different groups in the community, so that we set them up for discussion and sharing and things like that, so we can hear and give people a voice. Because I think that's important, too, because there are people that won't do this, but they're walking around with, you know, for feelings. And it's one, you know, I think we have to tap, like Seema and Nate said, different modes, because people respond differently, depending on who they are and what they feel comfortable with. So inviting people, a certain group to a focus group for students, a focus group, you know, staff, whatever, and with a question that they might have a discussion, somebody facilitate it, and we listen. I don't know, I don't know, but.
Well, I almost wonder, I think that's a great idea. I mean, we've been talking about doing focus groups in a variety of contexts, like Mr. Piscatale's doing them right now with students, around issues in the high school and so on. And as part of our equity audit, we'll be doing focus groups around diversity, equity, and inclusion. My hunch is that that is a good idea when we get further down the road on the budget, like, when we're at decision points. We're really not at decision points right now. We're at, here's in general where we are, we're gathering information about what worked from last year, what we may need going forward, but in February, we're going to be making decisions, like, this is it and this is not in. And so do we get feedback on those kinds of decision points that will, some of this noise in here will be filtered out, because we can't address all of this. Go ahead, Kim.
I'm not sure, because Gloria. You mentioned the community.
Yes.
Was that when, and I'm trying to think, when we first moved here, was that when you had, like, administrators in different areas, and then people would come in?
People came in, it's like different groups.
Okay, is there any way to maybe bring that back, but not have the wall of suits?
Well, no, the problem wasn't that, was people, we couldn't get numbers.
Well, no, and I remember that, and I remember that people would say, because I remember coming, because we had first moved here, and it was, and I didn't know what it was, so I came in, and I remember, there was like, nobody here. But then people that were here were intimidated, because it was literally a wall of suits in the back. That's what I remember about it, where it was like, you want to ask questions and be able to speak freely about the budget, but yet you have every administrator that exists in this district or does something in a suit on the back wall, and you're talking to them, and people are like, I'm not saying anything.
Well, we had, over the years, believe me, we tried different, you know, we tweaked it, kept tweaking that, and there was a time when they weren't part of the groups. We had them across the hall, the groups, you know, we spread them out with a facilitator from BOSI's, so that that wasn't an issue. But we, you know, we tried to learn, but the big thing with it was, we couldn't get people, it was inconvenient to get people out at night.
In the middle of winter.
In the middle of winter, of course. It was tough, it was tough, and I understood that, but we still want to talk to people.
Well, I'm looking at the chair of our communications committee. It sounds like this is a, an item, Gloria, for the next time we're together to think about what other options do we have to triangulate. That's a great, a great word for this.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next on the agenda, we have Board President info. We have one item here, which are the School Resource Officer update in DEI training. I think Dr. Wiles and I are going to kind of tag team and give a little update. I don't know if, Dr. Wiles, if you were planning to talk about the survey results for the SROs?
Sure, I can, we used a different tool this time. We did, just to recap, when we were together last at the board meeting, we talked about gathering additional information about the School Resource Officer from the perspective of our students. So last week, we crafted a survey. We had a survey for our high school students and a survey for our middle school students. And so I can just share the results. I'm sorry, I don't have a lovely PowerPoint on this one. At the high school, we had 694 students participate. 72.9% of them, when asked, yes or no, are you, would you like to have another SRO in the district that would be stationed at Farnsworth, so almost 73% said yes. So 27 said, no, they would not. When we did the survey, we asked students their gender and their race and ethnicity, because we wanted to see if there were any differences among various groups of students. And I have the breakdown here, and I can basically summarize by saying, no, when we looked, especially at the high school, female, male, non-binary, or prefer not to say, except for the preferred not to say, they were all 70, 73, 75% in favor of having an additional SRO that would be at the middle school. And I'll just point out that many of the, many of the students who said no, they said no because they want another one at the high school. And then we also broke out the data by ethnicity, and I am going to summarize, the group is just, you know, our students of color, which included our Asian students, our black and African-American students, Hispanic, Latino, and biracial. And when we looked at those students to see if there was, you know, we talked a lot about, are those students going to be somehow feeling uncomfortable? That did not bear out. We had 74.4% of our black students in favor of another SRO, 73% of our Latino, Hispanic, 70% of our biracial. So it seems strong feelings from our high school. At the middle school, we had 699 students who participated. 80.3 said yes, they were in favor of having an SRO in their building. 17.9 said no. There was a little bit of a difference in gender among the middle schoolers. 87% of females said they were in favor of an SRO, and it was 75, 73, 74, 75% for males, non-binary, and those who preferred not to say. And then when we looked at race, ethnicity, those subgroups were 80%, yes, in favor of having an SRO.
So I have a couple of comments, but I know that people have asked for this to be put on the agenda, so I will kind of open it up to everybody else first. Blanca, you asked for this to be on the agenda, correct?
Yeah, I just wanted to go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, does anybody else have comments?
So, I feel like Marie had mentioned at one point, what about adopting this as a pilot, and then giving the SRO committee more time to discuss things like the DEI. And then giving the SRO committee more time to discuss things like the DEI concerns and, sorry, and maybe discuss training, DEI training, which Sean agreed to and the chief agreed to. So I'd kind of like to get a sense of what people think about that, accepting it as a pilot for this year, based on, now we've heard from most of our populations, but specifically the students, and at the same time, you know, following through with the SRO committee. I'm sorry, I don't feel well. So what are people's thoughts in general?
What I mean concerned was, I agree with what Nate was pointing out the last meeting, that, you know, students in minority groups might, because that's what the research was telling us, but I also listened to what the chief said about, does our community reflect those research paper, you know, we're a different community than, so I'm, you know, I'm listening very carefully to, to this survey results here, and it's, it's very strong in terms of the kids' feelings. You know, I just, I guess the only thing I would say is, the only thing that really got to me was, when watching the video, was Sean's uniform. That presence of, it looked very intimidating to me, this is just my personal. And I don't know, I know the chief said that there was a lot of discussion about what type of uniform an SRO would have, and whether that has any impact at all on, on how students perceive. For me, it was, you know, it was the perception of, oh my God, we, we really got some severe issues here, and we've got to have somebody that's armed and that, that, so that really struck me. And I don't know if that's something that I, I'd really like to see, but if we could think about or discuss that and how the uniform and the presence of the officer in the, in the school community is done, that's all. But I was very encouraged by the survey results. I was moved by that and by the parent, the, the people who came and spoke. But I was very concerned because of so many of the people that came and spoke are, of the majority, and except for the last young lady who came. So I was very interested in hearing these results from the students.
But, excuse me, but I think with the video that, that showed the children's relationship with Sean was very moving, and it, I don't know, the, I guess the uniform didn't bother me, I was more interested in seeing how they reacted to him. They knew who he was, and they obviously felt comfortable and, and knew that, that he was there and was listening to them, and I thought that was very impressive. That's what I noticed most about it. So, thank you, Sean.
I, I just want to say something about the video, and I guess to Blanca's comments as well. So first, that I don't, I, I know that Voorheeswell has been talking about also adding an SRO to their district, and I just think that they're taking a much more measured approach. But we also have this offer on the table, so I don't want to be a barrier to what seemingly administrators and students are asking for. So I am fine with the idea of taking it as like a pilot program. I will say that if we're talking about adding a position for the budget next year, so once it becomes part of the budget, it's really hard to take it out of the budget. So this is like a line item that stays. And something like the video, to me, was really nice, but it didn't really teach me about the SRO program. And I feel like if people are going to vote and, you know, give feedback or debate about items in the budget, we need to give more information than, than a video like that. Like I was, it was very nice, and I, it seemed like the, the students really liked Sean, so that's great, but I also feel like there are people who ask all the time, what's an SRO? They don't really know what it is. So I don't know what they're commenting on in the, when they get a survey like that, they might know very little. I know, just from what we've talked about, but I don't know from that video, and I know that's just one example, I don't know about what the, the daily activities are. And I know that someone had asked before on the board about getting some more detail about that. And then the only other comment I have is that if we, you know, go that route, just like any other thing, it would be helpful to know how we evaluate or measure that it's a successful program. Because hearing from like a handful of students is, is great, but that doesn't speak for, you know, the majority of the district. Like if we're doing this at multiple buildings and administrators are asking, what's the feedback loop that we're going to use to see if this is effective?
The SRO committee, thank you for your comments. I will say that I feel like in general, perhaps the level of scrutiny of the SRO program, program in particular, is a little more prevalent, it seems. I don't remember it being quite so difficult to hire Matt, for instance, or I don't know, are we asking for any kind of update on the DEI, any kind of measurement? And I just think it's important to keep in mind that we be fair. And so I put that out there.
Yeah, and I mean, yes, it's fair to ask the other things, but I do think before hiring the DEI coordinator, coordinator, there was, there were so many incidents, I mean, you can just go back in the enterprise and read about all the different things that have come up in the, in the district. And so, I don't know, but I, I think that would be basically denying that Gildan has a racism problem.
Right, and I was obviously in favor, we did that on the fly. It made perfect sense to me and we voted as a group, I think everybody literally voted in favor of that. But what I'm saying is, we also have lots of fights at the high school. And I was going to mention this later, but I feel like perhaps some of the board members are a little disconnected, because you don't have kids in the high school, and on top of it, which I didn't realize till just a couple of weeks ago, all the board members are not on the Gildan email thread, right, on the listserv? And I, I wanted to bring that up later. Marie, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I think it would be, it's really important for all the board members to know, for example, about the lockdown drills and things like that. That's my two cents. So I do feel like there's some stuff maybe you don't know.
I'm, I mean, I get the feedback from the high school, I don't have kids in the high school, but I have a kid in the middle school, and I know that's what we're trying to create a position for. So it's not like that, you know, and it's also not a requirement to be, to have kids in the school to be a board member. But I, you know, asking that feedback from the, the district, I think, is completely valid and reasonable. There was another point, but I don't remember, there's Rebecca, and then Kim, and then Katie.
It's a popular topic. So I agree with Seema, I wouldn't want to stand in the way of a pilot program, but I have two concerns about the sustainability of the program. One is, we just got a budget presentation for a rollover budget. We talked about the fact that we have the lowest fund balance reserve in the suburban council. I just worry very much about budgeting for next year. And I think we have to be really cautious about adding new programs. Again, we're really early in the budgeting process, so I don't know what the next three or four months are going to show us, but it's, it's a concern that I have. And then the second concern I have is whether or not we can amend the MOU that we created in February or March, I can't remember when. The MOU recommends annual professional development, and I know Officer Ralston and the chief have been very supportive of that, but I really think we should require it, it shouldn't just be a recommendation, it should be a requirement. And to Judy's point and to Seema's point, the video was lovely. I mean, clearly the students are so engaged with Officer Ralston, they have so, so much respect for him, it's really commendable what relationships you've built with our students. But I'd really like some data, like some actual data about what, on a, on a weekly basis, what transpires with the SRO. I think that's helpful, I think it's important for our oversight. And I think the video and the presentation last time really kind of lacked that. I, I think we should be a data-driven board, and there wasn't a lot of data.
I, I agree with Blanca, whoop, sorry. I agree with Blanca, I feel like our students and, and our teachers and our, our community and our staff have been saying they don't feel safe at the end of the day. They don't feel safe. And we keep, I, I love the idea of the pilot program at least to start, and I understand that once we put something on a budget line item, it's hard to take off. But we keep saying that we're here for all of our kids, and we're literally scrutinizing safety, our students, and it didn't matter backgrounds, anything like that, and majority, the ones that participated said that they wanted this because they want to feel safe. And as a parent of a high schooler, and someone who has like, who's sitting there when I, when I go to like my son's events and the kids are sitting there, or if I'm at the high school, and these kids are telling me about how they're in class, and it's not because of a class size or things like that, that they're not, that they're not learning, it's because they're literally afraid and thinking about which halls they can and cannot walk down. And I know that we're talking about doing this for the middle school, but this is going to affect the high school too, if we have someone at the middle school, therefore keeping someone at the high school full-time. And I also, after the last meeting, because I wanted to know more as well, did my own research, because especially like every town was mentioned. Every town was mentioned because it shows that they don't prevent gun-related incidents, but they do reduce fights at school. They also took their data from Texas, from 2014 to 18. So they also don't recommend having the, the drills, because the drills, like our lockdown drills, cause harm to the entire community. But we can't stop doing our lockdown drills, because if something does happen, we do have to have everyone feeling like there's a plan, like we all just rightfully so lost our minds because we had a lockdown drill that did not go as planned, and people were petrified because they didn't know what to do in an emergency. And I know I tend to be the emotional one, which is why I brought my data this time, but our kids just keep saying they don't feel safe, and I'm not understanding why we have to scrutinize this into, I think, as Blanca said at her point, we have a DEI director, we have a positivity project, that no offense, did one of the worst video presentations that we've seen as a board, in my opinion, because those kids were just reading off of cards, and we haven't questioned and asked for data on that project, that teachers are told, or parents are told, and yes, I have permission if need be from parents to say so, that, well, we're not adding a social worker or this because we have the positivity project. Where, why aren't we asking for data on that like we're scrutinizing this? This is our kids' safety.
A lot of questions about positivity project.
They've been asking, but we haven't received anything and we don't push it. We just keep approving it after, because they come and do a nice presentation, and then we still hear from the teachers, especially at the middle school, that it's, it's not working, the students think it's a joke, and even at the high school, I know they're trying to fit it in. This is stuff where if we were going to do the positivity project, it should have been done starting at the earlier levels, so we're at least teaching these kids, instead of by the time with our top-down approach in this district, they're not causing all the issues.
Like a tangent, I'm just saying that that is broad.
I don't believe it is, I don't think it's a tangent, I'm just, I'm just comparing it.
Well, you said that people don't question positivity project, and they do every day. I get emails from people about positivity project. We've heard from Rebecca so many times about it not being effective at the high school.
But it's the same thing.
It isn't in the high school, though.
Right.
We are not doing positivity.
No, they can't do it, I remember that. But it's the same thing with this, I guess, I guess that's why I get frustrated, because it's like we had students come in and it was like, we literally looked at those students that day and said, well, you're not the majority.
I don't think that's true, and I also think that some of the stuff that the people that have written to us about with safety and security have been about the lockdown drill, for example, which really is not completely related to the SRO program. So I do feel like some of it's conflated.
It's, it's not, but I'm just saying, I guess the way I looked at it that day is if we're going to bring data from one place into it, then we need to bring all the data. And if you think it's a tangent, it's a tangent, and that's fine, I'm okay with that. It wouldn't be the first or last time someone thought it was going off on a tangent. I guess as a parent of a high schooler, and as someone who literally watches these kids tell me they're scared, I'm frustrated that we are literally doing the same thing, meeting after meeting. They're sitting here, and I can see the frustration on Sean's face at times, because it doesn't, I, I don't think the kids really care that he's wearing anything, he's a mentor, he's someone that's in there. And I'm assuming, and you could probably answer this better, the research that I did, there are certain protocols and guidelines for New York State that if you're an SRO, you have to follow anyways, and things that you have to do, and programs that you have to do. I know the AFT and the NEA also have strong suggestions as well.
Katie, and then Nate.
Hi, when we're talking about data and what we're looking at, and the role of SRO information for the program, I do think that one of the pieces that we miss hitting on is the support to teachers that comes from the SRO, and I guess, you know, the, the video was great, and I think that it's important that we see the relationship and support for students, but there were, there are a couple of areas where SROs provide support in schools to teachers that weren't really the focus of that, but do become a part of the role of having an SRO in the building, especially when you have instance of CPS involvement or different orders of protection, or areas that are another safety issue that we haven't hit on, and I think that that would be important for information to provide for everyone else who maybe isn't working in the school day-to-day, about the role that you do provide also in support of teachers, that directly impacts student and teacher safety.
I mean, that kind of data would be helpful, and it's kind of like what Rebecca asked about like a weekly report as to how that plays out. Like you said, Katie, like.
I mean, because I could think of a few instances in my own career, which I've worked with them, and I think that that's like the piece that we haven't included, but our teachers rely on our SROs significantly in those moments. You know, I, I worked with Matt on a case for, you know, for a student, and he was there to protect my role as the teacher. I wasn't taking into consideration that the student arrived unfortunately with an injury to me, but I was the one reporting it, I wasn't responsible for that injury, but he was taking in the report and protecting my role as the teacher. And I think sometimes like we miss that piece, that they're providing support for schools, for our teachers, that we haven't discussed. So that's all I wanted to add.
Nate?
I got a bunch of things. First off, the implication that because I don't have a kid in the high school, that I don't care about kids in the high school? Blanca, first of all, hot cuddle, you know, you said that because I don't know what's going on in the high school, then I'm somehow separated or I can't really speak to it. That's how I interpreted it. Okay. That's fine, but that doesn't mean that I don't care about what happens to these kids.
And I never made that assumption.
Okay. Let me finish. That's, that's my first point. Now I want to get into the other stuff. And again, I'm going to, I'm, I'm, I know I'm swimming upstream here, so I'm not going to stand in the way of any of this. I agree completely with Rebecca was saying, we need to get the data, we need to be data-driven here, and we've always been data-driven about everything we try to make decisions, and it feels, unfortunately, with a lot of these things, and I, I, I hear what Kim is saying about the positivity project, is we don't get a lot of data on this stuff when we really need to. Because we, if we're going to make decisions that are going to be based on the, what limited financial funds we have to play with, I'm not sure if I'm at the right word, play, we need to have some understanding about what the actual effect of those decisions is. So I, I'm, I'm wholeheartedly on board, I don't know how we do it, but we need to figure it out, and that's for this as well, for the SRO. My concern, after listening and digesting what was said the last meeting, and going through these comments on this thought exchange about security, I think we're, this is becoming an easy answer to a very difficult and complex issue, in saying, we have a security problem, whether we say it out loud or not, we have a security problem, these guys can't do anything about it. And that's not because they, they're not capable, it's because we have a massive building culture-level systematic problem that we are not addressing. And when we're talking about limited resources, I, my concern is, taking that limited resource and applying it to one individual, as good as that person may be, if we could clone him and he'd work for free, I'd hire seven of them. But we can't. And we can't guarantee that, that the person working at the middle school is going to be Sean. Could it be, I mean, my understanding is that the person we had here before Sean wasn't the greatest SRO. So is that what we're going to get? Now, again, that's all on aside, my point being is, we have systematic problem that we should be looking at applying our funds, our limited funds to, addressing that, so that these guys and what they do can be so much more effective. And we, and it's not going to be as effective as it can be, because we're not asking, and we're not addressing difficult and complex problems, because we're scared, or we don't have the right people in place, or we don't want to talk about spending money about it. And that's the concern I have, is that we're getting an easy answer to a difficult question. And that's the concern I have is that we're getting an easy answer to a difficult question because it's simple and we can't do simple with this type of issue. I'm done, sorry.
So as I said before, the SRO is a puzzle. I agree with Nate. Going back to my point about a disconnect, you may notice that the Safety and Security Committee is the only committee that doesn't report out. And I get why that is, but at the same time, it's also frustrating because I think the perception, you don't know exactly what we're doing. The whole board doesn't know and I don't know a way around that, Marie. I don't know if we can put it in the portal or something, but I feel like there's really important work being done by the Safety and Security Committee and, you know, the board, the whole board as a whole doesn't know.
Tell me if I'm wrong, that's not a board committee, right? That's why we don't get a share out.
True.
It's a school district.
We have a board rep on it. I don't know if there's a way around it, but I want to put that out there. So there's stuff going on that which is also part of this puzzle. And with regard to the being data-driven, what I'm asking is that we accept this as a pilot so we can continue the work that we started. We met twice. We met two times. The second time was about, you know, giving up the responsibilities of finding the data. And then, so we didn't get to fulfill our job and so we would like a little more time, but this offer's on the table and I think we should take it based on, you know, what people want in the thought exchange amongst the students. But I agree with you. I think we should finish our task as a subcommittee. I do still think that we are a little more scrutinous about this than we are of the positivity project. Many people aren't sold on it. We didn't get data, but we still voted for it based on the administrators coming out in favor of it and the fluffy video.
I mean, can I just say something? You saying that reminded me of my other point that I kind of forgot. It's okay for us to be scrutinous of this and it's okay for us to be scrutinous at a higher level than maybe are the positivity project because of what is concerned here and what is being asked here is to put an armed SRO in a building. So that's going to get, it should get more scrutiny than spending $17,000 a year that we get federally funds for on a positivity project. You know what I mean? So I understand, I don't, I don't, I don't want you to take it personal because we're being scrutinous. It's a difficult topic. I mean, it's a difficult topic everywhere. It's a difficult, that's why these guys are here because it's a difficult topic. So we got to scrutinize. That's what we're up here for. We got the emails and letters from concerned community members about this. That's fine, but I just, I think this idea that we're more scrutinous of this than something else, I mean, yeah, we are, of course, we should be.
Having more data on this before we make a bigger commitment. I'll just say that somebody wrote on the thought exchange that they just thought it was strange that the town had like the ability to offer a police officer like so quickly to us for free, which I also think is kind of strange. Again, I'm not going to be a barrier because everybody is in support of it, so I'm happy to support if that's what people want, but I just think that is, it kind of puts you in a corner. Of course, you're not going to say no, you know, and everybody wants that. And then all of a sudden it's, well, the next year you're going to pay for it. So it kind of puts us into predicament. You know, I just want to put that out there. But yeah, I'm happy to also support this as a pilot for this year. I don't, and it would be also helpful to know without like details that can't be shared at the public meeting, Blanca, about kind of what transpires at the Safety Committee.
We're the board. Why is it secret? Can it be an executive, like why is there this other group that can't share information with us?
It can't be an executive session.
Let me jump in. So every school district needs to have a Safety and Security Committee in order to develop its safety plan. It's been in place for years and years and years and it's not a board committee, it's a school district committee. And we recently opened it up to have board representation on it. Having said that, I don't see any reason why I can't share the minutes with you on the portal. There are confidential things that are discussed there around our safety plans and procedures. So I will be, you know, I may edit some things out, but ultimately you see our secure building-level emergency response plans every July. There's no reason, not meant to be a secret. I can certainly share those and you have the minutes from our last subcommittee meeting and can share those, we can share those as well.
Just leading up to those plans are relevant, you know, it paints a different picture. There's a lot involved, right? There's a lot of steps before it reaches the board. My two cents.
Are we allowed to ask, are they allowed to address like why, like to answer your question?
My question?
Yeah, like the pilot, why they're able to do a pilot, like because you said, I forget who it was.
Pilot is my word, so.
Okay. Well, yeah, like are they able to provide someone this year?
Well, I don't want to put them on the spot, but I mean.
Okay, then that's okay.
But if, I don't know, want to answer, you could do, that's true, to Chief McNally.
Good evening.
I'm assuming that's right.
Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to come to the meeting tonight. Again, I came here as a parent and as the chief of police, I've been doing this for 35 years as a police officer in the town of Gilderland. I think I have a little bit of experience in safety and security, so I appreciate giving you my insight into safety. I feel very strongly about the SRO. When that situation came up about funding, where I saw that money was the only reason why possibly we weren't having one, I funded it. That's why. It wasn't to put you on the spot, it wasn't to make you have to react to me. I don't play those games. We're talking about the safety of our kids. So that's where that came from. And I went to our town supervisor, which wasn't easy to do to get that funding because now I'm taking a resource from the rest of the community and applying it to the school, but I feel that strongly about it.
No, I appreciate that. I just, I was, you know, making a comment because in, I guess my seven years on the board, nothing has come so easily with funding, so that's why, you know, I had to point that out. Usually it's, you know, debated for a while or there's more push and pull, but I think that's great if that is an opportunity. That's why I'm saying if this is on the table, then I don't want to stop that. It sounds like pretty much everybody else is on board with that idea unless there's others who have not spoken yet.
No, I'm not a barrier, a barrier to it. I just want to have all the full, the full data, but I don't recall like denying anything. This is the second conversation that we've had on this. So if any kind of conversation that happened saying we didn't have funding or there was a request and we said no, didn't come from this board, it may have come from this, from the Safety Security Committee, maybe thinking that there might not be funds available, but it was never presented to us. So that's why we're a little bit, that's why we're a little bit kind of, we're like, where did it even come from? Besides conversations, you know, around election time, people had a lot of conversations back and forth about possibility, but there was never any denials of it. And I think it was conversations happening in this committee that we hadn't heard about yet. So this is, us questioning it is like, this is week four now maybe that we've even had a presentation to question. So I'm fine questioning it and pushing, just kind of getting answers and making people feel comfortable. I'm not a barrier to it. It's obvious that whether it actually fixes the problem, it's going to make our students feel safer from what I understand. And that's important, right? So do I think it's really going to fix stopping fighting and things like that? I'm not 100% sold on one person at the middle school might be able to help that, but if it makes people feel safe in school, then I think that's an important thing to consider.
And I appreciate that and I think we can go backwards though, where we had two SROs a number of years ago and we did lose one for funding. So this funding topic has been around for a while and this topic currently of putting a second one back has been ongoing. It's not just a couple of meetings or the last couple of weeks, this has been going on for quite a while.
For, but just saying for us, for the, the eight of us that aren't in there, this is kind of a little bit new, so.
Available. I came tonight not to speak, to be here to show my support of you so you know who I am. If even in a side conversation you want to discuss things, we remain available to do that. As far as the stats, when I became chief, we started doing our annual report a little bit differently where we actually calculated into the data, the data on SRO and what exactly they do. Is it helping a teacher get a child down a hallway? Is it walking somebody to their car because they're not feeling safe? So all those different topics we're now looking at in our annual report that's documented and it was in our reform groups that we met with. So we did about 780, don't hold me to that, actual interactions last year in the school. That's the first time we had that to look at, to all of your point, that you have to look to see what we're doing, is it helping? And it can be stopped. If it's not working down the road, we stop the program. I know it's hard to pull something out of a budget, I understand that.
Does anybody else have any?
I'm just going to follow up on Kelly saying, I think the, I think the confusion is not us, like you're saying, I think that there might just be a misunderstanding in the public about how this is the budget process and it's not like we're necessarily saying no to the SRO right now, it's just we're not adding the budget line immediately and going forward right now because that's something that I have heard at least where people are like, well, you guys are saying no. We're like, we're not saying no, we just, this is a budget process. There's the pilot and then there's adding it to the budget for next year for funding. So I think that's the disconnect.
And that was part of my reason for funding it when we were talking about it because I knew that in April we would make a decision about next September. So we would go a whole year without this address. So that was part of my decision-making as well.
I mean, did you share that with?
It's on our annual report, so it's there, but I can break it down by category so that you can better understand what information is there.
For us to put some, some picture of this and how it works because there are lots, not us, but people in the community. I think it would help, you know, because we're not in the school, so we don't know all the issues that you're dealing with and it would be, I think it would make it much clearer.
I would gladly share that.
See on the Safety and Security Committee and we did it.
Yeah.
Dan, if you can share with me.
Absolutely.
That'd be great. Rebecca, because I kind of have the same question about the MOU piece.
Because we voted on this before, you know, now.
Well, an MOU is a memorandum of understanding between two agencies. So I think, you know, Dan and I would have to get together and talk about amending the language, but I don't, and then I'd have to go back to the town and back to the board. So we can talk about that process.
And I'm not opposed to adding an educational component. It's a mandate, not just a recommendations.
Thank you.
Just before we go on to another topic, I, I just want to underscore that I feel like our conversation a lot has been that only Gilderland is having this problem with heightened issues of behavior and violence and fighting and that is not true. I mean, every school district around our region, the state and beyond is struggling with students who are exhibiting behaviors the likes of which we have not seen. So I just want to say that because I feel like this conversation is that well, Gilderland has a problem. Yes, we do, but we are a microcosm of a bigger picture where there is a bigger problem and we are reflecting that. It's not like we're an island of discontent or dysfunction. I'm not diminishing the challenges that we have, but I don't want our community to think that this is a Gilderland problem and everyone else is just great because they're not. So I just want to add that.
Thank you. Yeah, so what are the next steps, Dr. Wiles, if we were to take that upon the offer on the table for the rest of the school year?
Well, I think if someone wanted to make a motion, we could.
So can you make the, can you make the motion?
Make a motion to accept the offer on the table with Chief McNally as a pilot program, right? Help me out and what else?
For the balance of the school year.
For the balance of the school year.
In a second, Gloria, any questions or comments?
One more. I know you had people in mind for this position or that are available. We talked about before if there was, would be any board involvement in potentially making that selection or giving some input into that selection. Is that offer still on the table if we move forward with this tonight? Or how does that, how would that process work? I don't want to, I don't, I'm not a professional person for picking police SROs, but you know, I think some people may want to have a little bit of input.
I'm not opposed to having a member, a part of our committee. I just don't want it to delay starting the procedure. You know, it needs to happen pretty soon if that's going to happen. I think there was a student that wanted to be involved as well. So.
Bring it to the top of my mind, I guess.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, passes nine zero. Moving on to the next item, we are under action items and first we have school business. Neil.
My first agency is a recommendation to approve the resolution to authorize school bus and vehicle bond proposition for the May 16th, 2023 school budget vote and election in the amount of $1,206,000.
So I see this is a roll call, but first we need to have a motion to accept the resolution to authorize a school bus and vehicle bond proposition. Judy, second. Rebecca, any questions or comments?
You said when you're doing your presentation that you needed authorization so you could sign a letter of intent. Is this going to be enough for him? Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, I'm fine.
Thank you. Okay, now I'll turn it over to Linda. Thank you.
Dr. Butterfield?
I.
Mrs. DePirio?
Hi.
Mrs. Gonzalez Parker?
Hi.
Mrs. Person?
Hi.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Slack?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tollhill?
Yes.
Ed, Mrs. Blazek says yes, too.
Oh, I forgot you, I'm sorry. You're right on the top, that's why.
You say yes, Kim?
Yes.
Okay. So passes nine zero, thank you, Linda. Thanks, Neil.
For private transportation service contract number three beginning December 12th, 2022 to Rajah Group LLC.
Can I have a motion to approve the private transportation contract? Katie, second. Blanca, any questions or comments? All in favor? I pass as nine zero.
Next is a resolution regarding the 2019 capital improvement project and available funds and it's the Board of Education declaring that the 2019 capital improvement project can be accomplished in all material respects for less than the estimated total cost and as such hereby authorizes remaining available funds in the amount of $378,795 to be expended on needed heating improvements deemed to be in the best interest of the district.
Can I have a motion to approve the capital improvement available fund? Judy, second. Gloria, any questions or comments? Was this the one that was talked about business practices?
Yes.
With the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Passes nine zero.
Next is a resolution to accept the delinquent tax rolls and composite tax collection report for the 2022-2023 school year.
Can I have a motion to accept the resolution to accept delinquent tax rolls? Kelly, second. Katie, any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes nine zero.
Next is a resolution to approve the agreement with author Brendan Kiley to provide three presentations to Gilderland High School students on April 4th, 2023.
Can I have a motion to approve the author agreement? Gloria, second. Nate, any questions or comments? I just want to say thanks to Brana Autry for connecting with the author and I think she coordinated with Niski to have this happen, so it's really cool for the students. All in favor? Passes nine zero.
Next is a resolution to approve the agreement with the Mills Law Firm to provide legal services.
Can I have approved, can I have a motion, sorry, to approve the retainer agreement? Blanca, second. Katie, any questions or comments?
Yes, I'd like to abstain.
Okay. All in favor? Passes eight zero with one abstention.
Next is a resolution to approve the agreement with the College of William &amp; Mary to accept students for internship and practicum experience.
Can I have a motion to approve the internship agreement with William &amp; Mary? Rebecca, second. Judy, any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes nine zero.
And finally, a resolution to approve the agreements with True Now, excuse me, True North K-12 and Upstate Applied Behavior Analysis. North K-12 and Upstate Applied Behavior Analysis Services.
Can I have a motion to approve these two service agreements? Kim, second. Rebecca, any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes nine zero. Great, thank you, Neil. Next, under Board President Action, the list of policies to adopt, A through G, I think they were all up to read last time for info. Can I have a motion to approve the set of policies?
The I one, and we haven't had any policy meetings since then to address that question, so can we do this without that pre-referral intervention?
Yeah, which one do you remember, do you remember which one?
It was the pre-referral intervention policy.
Yes.
I think it was 4329.
Just as.
Oh, my gosh, give me a letter. Oh, here, B.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
B.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve A, C, D, E, F, G.
Because they're eliminating now.
We're eliminating it.
So, we're going to go A through G, with the exception of B, we're pulling B out, and B will go back to the policy committee to finish the work. Can I have a motion to approve those set of policies? Kelly, second. Gloria, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Bye.
Passes nine zero. Great, thank you. Next, we have Board Committee Reports, Communications. Gloria?
We already, we haven't met since the last meeting. We are meeting this Thursday, I believe?
Monday.
Monday, sorry. I wrote this down, so I remember one day. We're gonna meet on December 12th at 4:00 in D.O.
Thank you. Next, Audit? Policy.
We have not met, and we, we're in the process of, yeah, we gotta do the poll out to schedule the next one.
Oh, am I forgetting? Oh, Business Practices.
Business Practices, Matt, we had our presentation from, you know, and Cliff, and we voted on the school bus equipment, and that was so that we could lock in a price. And also, Cliff talked to us about the expenses getting ready for electric buses, which he also discussed, as well as the vehicle equipment, and the frustration of not even being able to get a price or leave alone get a vehicle has slowed down what we're doing, but we really do need that, and he tries to keep that in a rotation, much like we do with the buses. It's quite, the vehicles are quite old, so that's why we have to get something in there for those.
Thank you, Judy. DEI Committee?
So, please, anyone can add. We met last on November 16th, we heard reports from the various subcommittees. Dr. Wiles gave us a report on the superintendent's conference day that had been focused on strategies to address the recent issues regarding race. Dr. Wiles also provided an update on the equity audit and the equity learning walks that had occurred in early November. We also discussed our learning collaborative with a focus on self-reflection on our intergenerational identities. We talked about the importance of having culturally rich libraries, and members of the committee are compiling a personal list of recommendations just to include in a home library. I left anything out. Next meeting is December 20th at 7:00.
Do you remember when the book recommendations are due?
I think they were supposed to be before the next meeting.
Okay, good, thank you.
The only other piece is that the DEI director and different members of the committee will be available at the public library to share information and to take back information from the community, so it'll be, and then we'll, as we develop more of our book reviews, we'll be sharing those out at the library.
That's pretty cool.
I've also noticed that DEI members, I don't know if it's just my PTA meeting, but they've been zooming in on all the meetings and providing an update to the, to the parents through the PTA meetings, which I think is fantastic. Ours, there's a lot of interest in it.
Engagement is doing.
Yeah, it's, it's good.
Thank you, Rebecca, Katie, Kelly, and Blanca. I guess it's like the combination. Those are, what's that?
Team report.
Yeah. Those are all the Board Committee Reports. Public comment number two, Lynn, did anybody else submit? Public comment? No? Okay, thank you. Board issues, ideas, and sharing, does anybody have any ideas or issues they wanna bring up? Rebecca?
Just had a really quick question, sorry. I know there's been a lot of parental feedback, as well as faculty feedback, about the recent lockdown situation that was erroneous, but still happened, so I was hoping we could get some, some feedback on that.
So, I did follow up with Mike Piscatelli to get the bulleted list of things that are happening, and so, actually tomorrow, he will be doing a session during homeroom where students will be able to hear what each of the commands sounds like, shelter in place, lockout, lockdown, so they're familiar with the sounds and alerts and comfortable with it. Mike also met with faculty and identified that the issue that you raised, making the announcement, was, was an error, and it was a break from our lockdown procedures. So, going forward, even if an alarm is triggered mistakenly, we will not make any announcements in classrooms, will be unlocked and cleared by the police and district staff, so that, that was an error. They also met with the kitchen staff to ensure that everyone understands the lockdown procedures during lunch, which are more complicated. And then, he said that our students need more training, so we're in the process of creating a series of training videos for students on lockdown procedures with a special attention to sort of special situations, like if you're in the hall, if you're outside, if you're in the bathroom, if you're in the cafeteria. And so, tho-, those will be shared soon, and they'll be share, shown in homeroom and discussed prior to the next drill. We have three more drills, we have three more classroom drills and cafeteria drills to do. And then, I'll just add to that, that right before Thanksgiving, a team of us met to talk about our system and our training. The police department was there, Comsource was there, that's the vendor who provided our system, Mr. Noonie, me, and a couple others, really trying to talk through, how is it going so far? Because a lot of our elementary buildings have had their lockdown drills, and the middle school just had theirs. And we talked through a number of things on the technical side of the system itself, but also on the training side. On December 15th, that group will be gathering again with all seven of the principals to do a very detailed debrief of the experience, so that we can fine-tune both the system as we learn, you know, the intricacies of how it works, as well as lessons that we've learned on the actual training and the drills. So, there's really a lot been going on. It was a terribly unfortunate thing that happened, but we have learned a lot of very valuable lessons about our system and our preparedness that we'd not, would not otherwise have. So, I persist as the silver lining person, because it really did provide us with an opportunity to learn some things in a, you know, when there wasn't danger. So, lesson learned, we'll keep going.
So, thank you for that, Dr. Wiles. The only thing that I don't see being addressed is the emotional piece with our students. And so, like, if you look at the thought exchange on our website, there are comments about that, and one of them is, you can't hit the wrong button and say, sorry, it was an accident, you scared people, and what if it really was a lockdown and you hit the fire drill then? So, great, we have things we're gonna do moving forward, but I can't help but feel like we haven't really circled back to those parents who got what they thought was gonna be the last text ever from their kids, and the kids who were hiding in the, behind drums. So, I'm just, I feel like that piece is missing.
Yeah, because we wanted to walk through these steps that I just outlined, so that when we're communicating with parents, we can be thorough about, okay, here's what happened, here's what we're going to do, address the anxiety and fear that that experience caused. I know that that will be part of the conversation that happens in the homerooms when they're hearing the various sounds and such, so we will circle around, but we feel like we wanna finish our homework and then, and then communicate out.
Okay, sounds great, thanks. I have a positive tangent to that. My daughter did a lockdown drill at the, at FMAS, and I was particularly like critical, you know, I wanted to make sure everything was done well, and honestly, I think it was done very well. And the teacher did kind of a debrief, in addition to the muscle memory and the practicing of hiding, she, she spoke with them at great lengths, which I thought was wonderful.
Yes, I know, I think the drills and all of the things have been going very well. And I know the team right there has been there, so thank you.
Any other board issues, ideas, and sharing?
And Matt and Sean for their service, you two, Chief Merlin, and for answering our questions, and it was a difficult discussion, so I appreciate you coming out, and additionally, it feels like a partnership, which, based on what I've read, could be unique in some school districts, so I do appreciate that partnership and that willingness to work with us.
Judy?
I just wanna say one last thank you to Neil Sanders, this, yeah, I, we will miss you, Neil.
Now, I like really question every semicolon that I use, too. Do not know Neil's affinity toward semicolons. Any other board issues, ideas, and sharing? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn? Kelly, second. Rebecca, all in favor? It passes nine zero. Thank you, everybody.